I am reconvening to open session, the regular meeting of the Fairview District 72 Board of Education. It is November 16th, 2022, a smidgen after seven o'clock. But I ask everybody to please double check and silence their cellphones and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance. Thank you. We'll try not to cough on the way. We've all got it. I haven't. I'm well. At least I hope to stay well. The whole board has been suffering. What? Never mind. Okay, our first item of business this evening is to approve the regular and close session minutes of October 19th, 2022. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
Motion.
Our second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The minutes are approved. So next is approval and the payment of bills. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the payment of the bills in the amount of $1,068,997.95?
Motion.
Our second. Could our Secretary Pro Tem please call the roll call vote?
Yes. Mrs. Downing? Mrs. Boujde?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Diakakis?
Yes.
Short and sweet. It's approved. Next item is PTA. Do we have a member of the PTA to give a report? Excellent.
Good evening, everyone. On October 28th, we had the PTA Halloween party for the first time in the last three years. And it was a great success. We had food, DJ, bounce house, face painting, balloon artist. And it was a great turnout that night. On October 31st, we had the PTA Fall Party for the classrooms. And that was also good turnout with craft and games. The spiritual clothes were distributed last week to all the parents. There was a Chipotle fundraiser going on right now, actually, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. And for next four PTA meetings will be held on Zoom. We also want, we are very grateful for our community and thankful for all your support this year. And PTA wants to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving filled with gratitude. Thank you.
And happy Thanksgiving to you too. That's great. So glad the Halloween party was back in person. Okay, so school activity report. Can anyone or does anyone want to share good news from the district? Right, thank you.
I wanted to share a couple of things. I was not able to get to the NTDSC meeting this month, and I'll share that report later. But we got a letter for Friends of NTDSC where they put out a nomination for people who work with NTDSC as being like, kind of above and beyond. So here's a letter recognition from Ms. Allison Mayer.
No.
Okay. She was recognized by NTDSC and nominated by Ms. Kirsten Safely as, I'm gonna read because it's pretty phenomenal. You ready? Listen to this. Allison has gone above and beyond to collaborate with me and make sure that our students have materials that are accessible and ready in a timely manner. Not an easy task. She's not only makes her classroom a wonderful and welcoming place for all her students, but for me as well. She's made sure I'm part of the culture at Fairview and a part of her team. She's a huge part of why I look forward to going to Fairview every day. Thanks for all you do. And that's for Allison Mayer. Thanks.
Great news.
I have one, one item. I received this in the mail to present to Mary Ann Brown, Distinguished Board Leader, 2022, from the Illinois Association of School Boards. So congratulations.
Put it with my collection. I actually, yeah, every year. Only because I turn up. That's what it is all about. It's all about turning up with IASB. So, but thank you. Any other good news? Any other sports stuff? I guess that's your cue, Mr. Lepac. Basketball season started. Great, thank you. Good. So moving along, we have our administrative reports. We will start with the superintendent's report. Yeah.
Yeah. So the report was included in the board packet for your reference. A few of the highlights. We, you know, continue to welcome our newcomers into the building and we continue to be really amazed and impressed by our Fairview students and the way in which they've welcomed them. You know, highlight for me this week was seeing the children experience snow for the first time. It was, it was magical to see their faces coming off the bus and trying to get snow on their tongues for the first time. But, you know, I really have to give a shout out to our staff who have just embraced this challenge, and it is a challenge. Our new students come with a variety of issues that they're facing just because of their journey and their current situation. And so we're starting to see that play out in classrooms. But are lucky, we are very lucky to be well resourced in terms of mental health supports and whatnot. So just really, really proud of all of the staff's work to embrace these new students and help them feel a part of the community really quickly. Moving on, I will just mention the K8 connectedness that Colleen and Mike spoke of. That was one of our strategic planning initiatives. So you'll see us sort of interweaving throughout the school year, various work towards those initiatives. We're working on math curriculum and, you know, various things. I am proud to report to the board that we achieved the top workplace award for the fourth year in a row. So we had a little celebration here at school. You know, that's receiving feedback from our staff about, you know, how they feel coming to work every day. So that makes us feel really good. We are hoping to continue to try to employ some additional staff members. We need support in the ESL department. Our school nurse is feeling the pressure of added students and added needs. So we're looking to secure at least on a part-time basis, some additional nursing support. We have been able to secure two school office maternity leave substitutes now. So we have been able to hire a second person since our second school office staff is going to be having a baby any day now. So other than that, I think that's pretty much the highlights, the construction. That's like a whole separate job. Construction is moving along. Concrete still seems to be a pretty pressing issue for us because we can't seem to obtain concrete. But the construction company has done a really good job of kind of working around that and continuing to move forward with progress in the areas that they can. So our walls are going up, which is very exciting. We did some landscaping and probably most, most apparent to many parents was that we smoothed out the driveway. Asphalt was added because there wasn't a chance we were going to be able to snowplow that the way it was. So we got the asphalt in and then it snowed. So we, we lucked out on that. But so those are really the highlights. I'm happy to answer any questions anyone has about the report or anything else.
That was one of the first things I noticed when I drove into the car this evening. I thought this is much smoother than it was last time.
It's definitely smoother.
Great, thank you. So the other administrative report is me, which is about the proposed IASB resolutions. I actually attended a webinar from IASB on this last week, talking about the resolutions. And they actually did explain why there's significantly less resolutions this year than they have been in, in previous years. Some years has been like eight, 10, 11. It was just excessive. Whereas this year, there's actually only three. And then of those, only two of them are actually recommended. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong page. Only one of them is actually recommended for adoption. So we actually just have to make a decision this evening because I will be going to the conference this coming Friday and Saturday. And we just need to decide whether we agree with the resolutions committee that we are going to follow their recommendations or whether we are going to choose to, to go opposite to their recommendation. The one thing I wanted to mention is if they are actually suggesting that it is do not adopt, then those actually aren't discussed unless the people that have bought that resolution dispute it. So even if, if they say do not adopt and we decide, yes, we do want to adopt, it still may, it may be moot because it may not get discussed anyway. So anyway, just running through the three, there was the one about the Miller ratio, which is to have legislation that would actually set into legislation the ratio of the amount of funds that a school district can keep on hand versus their actual annual budget. And the recommendation is that they can have up to three times the amount of their annual budget. And that one, they are recommending to adopt. So do we agree with that? Do we not agree with that? I mean, personally, you know, as a district, we're actually going in the opposite direction. We're trying to reduce our, our fund balances to less than two. It was about 18 months, I think, wasn't it? So so we're actually going in the opposite direction. But if we agree that for some districts that they actually would like to have up to three times their annual budget on hand, it's whether we'll do it or not. Okay with that? Right, I guess we support. The second one is regarding the alternative school bus funding. This one they do not recommend. They say it will actually distract from the funding of school bus transportation generally. So do we support it or do we not support it? I personally would like to see more green buses. Yeah. 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 I think. Yeah, but yes, that's true.
My thought on it is if, if we get legislation to encourage it, then won't funding follow? Yep, there we go. I love mics. I don't know. I don't know if like a school board addendum would follow up with funding for these schools or not. I don't really.
You would hope.
Across the board, though, wouldn't a regular bus be used more than an electric bus by other schools?
Yeah, I mean, it's hard to say. I mean, the issue with this one is it's do not adopt anyway. It may not even come up. But it's whether, I'd like to see more buses that are electric.
The principle of the matter is, do we prefer to have more green, environmentally friendly school buses? And I think the answer that I'm hearing around the table is yes. However, not every school district has the capacity to change their buses.
Can they provide that at every district?
Well, I think the concern is that the fact that there isn't enough money for transportation now. So setting up a situation where they needed more money to equip schools, it's just not very likely to actually happen. So maybe it's like, yeah, we really would like it, but it's not very likely. I can go with their recommendation then. So the firearm dealer location, that was to expand the distance between a firearms retail location and a school. At the moment, it's 500 feet and they wanted it extended to 1,500 feet. The feeling was do not adopt because the feeling was that it's just the wrong focus that that actually wouldn't make a lot of difference because if there are businesses that are already within 1,500 feet, then they would get exemptions and so on and so forth. So the, the impact would not actually be that significant. So they're saying do not adopt. Thoughts on that?
Disagree.
Disagree?
I mean, here's my, my, I mean, I'm one person, but
Yeah, no, everybody's
The farther away from a school, the better. If it's one step, great. Then there will be another litigation of it can't be in the same county. Then there will be another litigation. It can't be, so
Potentially, yeah.
My theory is if we're else, I mean, if it's
You agree with that?
To the avenue, that's a concern. So I would say
I agree.
They should entertain it. I don't know what we're supposed to say.
Well, we can go against their, their recommending do not adopt. So we're saying that we should adopt.
I mean, the reason is because a firearm store within 500 feet of a school is just going to apply for an exemption. Fine, but then there's not going to be more firearm
Be more coming in.
Built within.
No, I think the rule is already, it says that the rule is already 1,000. So where they're trying to increase it to 1,500. It's not 500. Of course, I'm against, you know, firearm as far as possible, but I think I see the implication, which is what they're describing.
And I also understand litigation wise, if they think they're going for the wrong target, like the target is to, you know, not have them near schools at all or whatever. So I think we
You disagree? We're gonna go against the recommendation? I mean, actually, I'm with these two, so that's like
I was just going, I was just clarifying. That's fine.
Okay. So I've marked that as opposed. So the existing positions, I really don't want to spend too much time on these because these are existing positions. They're things that they're already working on and it's just a small change of language. So some of them, they're actually recommending that they pursue this capital grant for funding school buildings. That's a yes. The school safety fund, continuing with that, there's just a small expansion of the language. So that's a yes. The involvement of candidates for public office, there's, they're recommending not. I think that's actually taking out certain language about, is taking up the language that refers to legislative candidates. This, I'm sorry, they're talking about more going for the sort of overall legislative goal rather than focusing on particular legislative candidates. And the feeling was that if you actually get to the candidates, then you get to the goal. So that was a do not adopt. Okay. The mandates review. You know, we're always up against mandates and this is a recommendation to add language that talks about all mandates should have a sunset provision. So that was supported. And then language to strengthen school board elections being nonpartisan. That was adopted. So I, I, I think I think I'm okay on all of those. I don't think there's anything revolutionary about any of them. So I will go with all of those and then the rest of them that do not present. So that's that. So thank you for helping we whizz through those. I'm, I'm really, I'm really hoping, since there's only three new ones and the rest are confirming, that it won't take the three hours that it's done in the past because I don't get to do anything else on the day except be the delegate. So here's hoping I can actually do something more constructive that day. Right then. So board committees and representatives, do we have a finance person?
We don't have a member of the board who was present at the finance personnel committee, but we did have a meeting on Monday. Sargon, Erin, myself and Jeff met via Zoom and really focused on discussing the levy in depth, which we're, you're going to hear more about later tonight. So I'm going to leave that to the expert. And we also talked a little bit about the school district annual audit being delayed. But the board will see that coming to you in December. So I would save that discussion for December when we have it in front of us. So I think that's probably what they would have reported if they were here.
Okay. We'll wait for the full report on the audit, the levy, I mean, not audit. Okay, so Ed Redd representative, that's me. Actually, it's kind of me, maybe Jeff. Because I wasn't able to go to the November 4th meeting, but it was quite a significant meeting because it was the joint meeting with IASBO. Hence, Mr. Fayer was there. So can you just brief us on what happened at that meeting first and then I'll go into whatever else I know?
Yeah, so there was three main topics. One was current legislation about property taxes currently at the state level that are being discussed. So that was a general kind of overview and what's going to go on the next year. Number two was a presentation forensic, forensic red alert about the new property tax recapture law, which actually will be, actually will be, it's a segue into our tax levy presentation, which allows districts that don't levy for the maximum each year to recapture that amount in future years, which has never been allowed before. Because essentially what it's been is if you don't levy the maximum, you then forego that revenue in future years and aren't able to recapture that. This is a new mechanism with the CPI being at 7% this year that allows districts to do that while also being fiscally responsible to their own constituents and not asking for a 7 to 8% increase. The third topic was the migrant students that are currently in the northern suburbs. And it was a presentation from Maine Township High School. And actually, my wife's boss gave the presentation, which was also nice. But actually just talking about what, how they've dealt with the situation and different supports that they have in place. And I think Sydney came in for the last part of that presentation and we just kind of, other districts are going through things that they needed from the lobby and our, from Ed Redd to help them in their efforts to support these students. Because many of the students were placed in districts that don't have the necessary supports for them to get everything they need. You know, Maine is nice because they have a large Spanish speaking population, a huge EL department that could support them. Whereas other districts that receive these students don't have that same benefit. So we made sure that we had our voices heard and other districts were, were able to create a list. And there's a meeting tomorrow, a follow-up meeting about that tomorrow. And that was it.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thanks for pulling us in. Yes, that meeting tomorrow is one of the things that I was going to mention because I will be attending that as a Zoom meeting tomorrow. Lunchtime? Two o'clock. Oh, you'll be there too? Excellent. So that is basically a follow-up meeting regarding the whole issue of the fact that there are so many students coming into the districts and the obligations of the schools because it's purely geographical. If they live in your district, they go to your school. There's, that's it. So I'll be following up with that tomorrow. I also have, I'm, I'm part of the school safety committee for Ed Redd, one of their ad hoc committees. And we had our first meeting on October 28th. It was really just an introduction meeting for everybody to kind of get to know who they were and what their background was and what their understanding was, their perspectives, their, their ideas and so on. So there will be another meeting on December 9th that I'll be attending to sort of follow through and come up with some sort of more concrete ideas about what we can actually do. There was a lot of ideals. But obviously, you need to actually come up with something a bit more concrete and something more sort of manageable that you can take forward in terms of legislation for improved school safety. So Ed Redd, back to the whole business of immigrant students. Ed Redd is compiling a lot of data from all the districts that it's working with on the students, just, you know, how many, who they were, what their needs were, what the costs were, where they are, where they're positioning in the school and so on. And so they're going to be working with that data as they collect it from different schools to work with it legislatively. Meeting I mentioned tomorrow. Ed Redd are, are planning to work with legislators, not just the state legislation, which is their usual go-to, but federal legislators as well to work on funds and solutions for this whole issue of immigrant students. As far as the four veto session is concerned, there really isn't much on the, on the docket that is related to education. So less concern about that. But obviously by next spring, there could be a whole host of things. The, the Ed Redd dinner is moving back to January. Always was the last Monday in January and they're moving back to that next year. It'll be on January 23rd. I don't have the location yet, but that will be including the Legislative Roundtable. So that's basically it on Ed Redd. So NTDSC, you mentioned that you didn't make the meeting, Laura?
No, I was, I have the notes, but I was down ill, but Taryn takes, sends out kind of an update. So as your NTDSC representative, I can tell you that they are working on a sub initiative to try and get substitutes in. So they're offering gift cards and things for subs who can make it on certain days because there's a nationwide sub shortage and schools and programs that NTDSC offers are essential. So they're just trying to incentivize that. They also started a committee, Jeff, I think you were there, I can't remember if Carla was there, about the Articles of Agreement between the different districts. So they're revamping or they're just looking at the nine districts that work with NTDSC and going through their Articles of Agreement to make sure moving forward that everything, everybody's getting what they need and it's all equitable. They have their Family Fun Fest coming up tomorrow, which sounds really exciting. It brings families together and they have prizes and games and sounds awesome. And then they're doing a new administrator orientation. So any administrators that are part of the NTDSC districts can have an orientation through their group. That's questions?
Sounds great. Thank you. And finally, PTA. Is there anything? And, but you, did you attend a meeting and tell them what we're doing? Oh, you were sick. Yes, I'm so sorry. Okay, so freedom of information, there was one request received in this last month and it was handled as required. Information items and correspondence. There were no correspondence items this month. So we're moving swiftly along here to public comment. At this point, I would invite any members of the audience to address the board, ask them to state their names. And you will be given a three-minute time limit to address the board. Crickets. Anyone? And there were no online submissions?
There were not.
No. Okay, thank you. So moving on, wow, this is going to be record time, I think. Except there's the levy. This is our action items. So first item on the list is the tentative 2023 tax levy. So can I have a motion and a second to approve the tentative, tentative 2023 tax levy? I will second. Mr. Fayer, take it away.
For the levy, believe as you put it. Thank you. Yeah, I will try not to drone on like that.
We, we, we just love the way you explain it because I look at it in the packet and then I need you to
Well, hang on, hang Well, hang on, hang on, you might have second thoughts after this, so let's.
No, I won't.
Thank you, everyone. This is the 2022 tax levy, the one time a year when we ask for money. Is that a good way of putting it? Maybe? The most important reason we do this is because, this isn't updated, do you have the slideshow up here? This isn't the slideshow, it's updated. Right now? Oh yeah, there you go. It just changed, look at that. There you go, we're good. Just trying to highlight the 71%. The reason we do this is because 71% of our revenues comes from us putting the levy out there and getting that approved. That's higher in previous years, we're getting a number, we're getting a large amount of federal revenues currently and other, and CPPRT currently larger than usual, which is why 71% is lower than usual, but still a huge number. The important thing to remember is that the levy is simply a request for money. We have very little control over the rest of the process. Once the levy is approved, the county goes through the assessment process where they value the property in the district. The equalization process, which brings that property in the district to an appropriate value compared to other counties. They calculate the tax rates based off the value of the properties and then what we request and other taxing bodies request, not just the school district. And then they extend the monies to the taxpayers and we get what's owed. And we don't always get what's owed, so that the collection is different than the extension. So those are the different terms there. The reason that this is a different year than usual is because PTEL, Property Tax Extension Limitation Law, is actually coming into effect. So back in 1991 in Cook County, they added this law where if CPI was over 5%, districts couldn't tax or couldn't levy more than 5%. They were limited to that amount. We've never gone over 5% before until this year. In December 21, CPI was 7%, which for the first time is putting this into effect and making this a little bit of a different exercise than is typically. You'll see right there, off the charts. And currently, I, the future years, the purple on the right are just a projection based off a five-year average. But currently, this next year is trending around 6%, so we could have back-to-back years where this is coming into play. How are taxes calculated? So they take the previous year's extension, that aggregate extension base, they add the increase of the CPI, which is either, we had 1.4% last year, or this year it's capped at 5%, and that's what you get for the current year. The one difference is that any new property that comes into a district during a year comes outside of that, that tax cap, so we're able to access that for one year. The problem being, we don't know what that new property is. Most of this is invested, is a total guess, an estimate based off of previous years. We don't know what the EAV is, we don't know what the new property is. We can only go off of our best guess, and that's information that we glean from other districts. That's what we get from the county assessor and then past year's projections. Also outside of this cap is any debt service, which of course we have a debt payment schedule currently for our bonds that we issued. And then the refund and recapture, which is the first year that's coming into play. Refund and recapture is a law that was put into place for districts to get money back from taxpayers getting appeal, winning appeals and winning objections, especially with us, since we have so much commercial property, and those are usually the bodies that will contest their property taxes more often and their bigger dollar amounts. We've been hit pretty hard within the last five years. This is the property valuation process, and this is just, the reason I put this here is because none of this is in our control. This is all by the Cook County Clerk, and it is all a best guess on our estimate. This year, we saw our EAV go down seven, or go down about 10%, which is the first year it's gone down in a number of years, but based on early tax estimates from this coming year, we're anticipating that goes back up. Taxes reassessed every three years in North Cook County. This year is our, is our reassessment year. Typically, we see larger spikes in those reassessment years, and that's what we anticipate this year. The great thing, and we mentioned this a number of times about District 72, is that 33, only 33% of our property in the district is residential. Residential is taxed at a lower rate than commercial property. So what that means for us is that our tax base grows based on the fact we have larger commercial and residential property in the district. And as you'll see here, compared to other school districts, and this is our 2021 tax information that we just got in November, when we typically did it in June, because it was delayed, we have the largest percentage of commercial industrial property in the township. And what that does is that keeps our tax rate relatively low for our homeowners. If you look at some of those other districts, we're talking about the large residential districts have a tax rate that is twice as much as ours. Other factors go into that, whether that's how much debt they have outstanding or what they're actually levying, but that's an important number to see there, because that 2.48 number is even with our debt service included. So that number is still very low. There, we're looking at our, our tax base, 2021, as you'll see, is what we're doing, or is what we're going off of tonight, is the 500,000, it dropped there from 550,000 last year. And then 2022 for the lobby, for 2022 tax year, we're looking for it to jump back up. Here you'll see the relationship. So when people say, you know, you're taxing us, you're causing our taxes to go up, we can only extend or levy a certain amount based on PTEL. We have very little control on that, over that. What does drive the tax rate more often than not is the EAV. Last year, the EAV went down 9%, the tax rate went up 12.2%. But you'll see in previous years, when the EAV went up, back in 2019, the EAV went up 16%, the tax rate went down 13%. That's a pretty clear indication of what drives the tax rate in the district. Over time, you'll see our tax rate has hovered between 2 to 2.5% and stayed pretty much in that range. That purple part of the bar, there you'll see the green bars are capped levy, the purple bar, part of the bar is our non-cap rate. That's when we have debt. You'll see back in 2013 and then 14 is when we paid off our debt, and then 21 is when we issued the bonds. This is just to illustrate how long a timeline we're talking about with this entire process. So January to December 21 is the CPI measurement period, when they actually find out what the cost of goods are, how much it's going up by, and then the CPI is finalized in January 22. And then it brings us to that process, I don't know, December 28th is up, December 28th, 2022. That's the deadline we have to deliver the levy to the county clerk. And then these tax receipts are received over the next two fiscal years. So from January 21, all the way to fiscal year 24 is just for this tax levy. The timeline is pretty extensive. The variables for this year, again, the CPI is 7%, up from 1.4 last year. Existing property, what we're anticipating again is a 7.7% increase, that's just based off of previous projections. New property in the district, so this is an interesting one, because we don't really get much. The most we've had in the 12 years I've been here is 12.4 million last year, which was when the Amazon facility came on the books. And there's a little delay when those first, the new properties come on. So we're protected with a 4.9. What we've done in the district typically, and I'll get to this in a minute, is we've gone 4.99%. 5% is the truth and taxation threshold, where you have to have a public hearing, you have to go through this process, which isn't a big deal for us, because we've always done it where in November we present the tentative, and December we approve the final. We don't have to do it like that, we do it to be more transparent. But we've always stayed underneath that 5% cap. Now, this being the first year that we potentially could go over that 5% cap legally, there is, there are reasons that I'm suggesting that we shouldn't do that. I don't anticipate us getting much more new property in this next year, but we are protected up to 12.5 million. Again, that's the one variable that we could lose tax money on if we don't levy enough. Again, unknown at this time is the EAV and the new property. On the left there are the different funds that we levy for, from normal funds that you guys have all seen. And then we have the cap tax rate. What that is, is the total amount of money we're asking, are we extended or asking for, divided by all of the property in the district. Then there's the bond and interest, which is added on top. And then you'll see Public Act 1020519, and what that is, is again, that recapture from the property tax appeals and objections, which is added on by the county. We don't determine that amount. Then they take that total number and they divide by the total property again and get the tax rate. So the first column was what was extended in 2021. Again, we can increase that up to 5%. That second column is what I'm asking, what we'll present to the board tonight, and we will actually sign and certify at the next board meeting. And then that following column is actually what I projected that the district will get. And there's, you'll notice there that even though we're recommending a 4.99% increase, I'm projecting we get a 5.2% increase, and there's a reason for that in the next slide. So what happens at Cook County is that when we put the levy out, we submit the levy, Cook County adds 3% on top of our request. And now, why do they do that? They do that because they want to protect taxing bodies in case there's a loss in collections, or they don't, they don't get enough in collections. So every year they add 3% on to our, or to our levy to protect districts. So we also think there's going to be a lack of new property. Now, again, I said we're protected under that 4.99% up to 12.5 million. 12.4 million is the most new property we've ever received. The only new property, huge new property that we even know about at this point are, you know, the potential housing development in three or four years. So we don't have anything currently that we anticipate coming on the books. We also have that three-year recapture mechanism that we talked about when I gave the EdRed update earlier tonight. What that does is if we don't levy to the max amount, within three years, we're able to get that money back by filing a notice with the county clerk, which I intend on doing, following our certification of levy in December. The last part is fiscal responsibility. You know, this is something that we wrestle with, because traditionally what we've done is we've, what they call balloon levy, which is levy above the CPI to a point, to protect us in case of new property. This year with us going over the 5%, it would seem kind of odd when I, in projecting that we're probably not going to get anything close to that, to go above that 5%. Could we? Absolutely. Is there a problem with it? No, because the number of districts are doing that. But if I'm saying, based on these variables, I don't think that we're going to come relatively close to that number, I don't see any sense of doing that, to go out there and say, hey, we're asking for 7 to 8% more in tax money from our constituents, or from our taxpayers. So there's a number of reasons right there why I think that the request of 4.99% will put us in good position still. So my recommendation tonight is 4.99% over the 2021 extension. Underneath the truth and taxation threshold, our new property as a percentage of our EAV remains very small. CPI is again trending high for 2023. Again, we want to have that and be cognizant of that too, because it's probably going to be the same situation next year, we're over 5%. And not only that, we don't want to have consecutive years of us going out and saying, hey, we're requesting 7% increase, we're requesting a 6% increase. Our healthy fund balances right now, even though we're, you know, paying for a good deal out of construction, but we'll have a lot more information at this time next year, especially going through the reassessment in 2022. Again, an important reminder that us requesting the money is one simple part of the process. A lot of it is out of our control, and we are at the behest of what the county clerk values the property at. We allocate the levy funds between, to try and bring the fund balances to appropriate amount and account for what we budgeted for and what we project the budget's going to be in future years. And then we'll have these levy and tax calculations on the Fairview website, and then we'll approve in December the final amounts. And with that, is try to be as clear and concise as I could. It's a lot of information.
I think in all the years I've been doing this, we usually end up at the 4.99 every year. But I'm interested to ask about the, the recapture, the new legislation with that. I mean, how, how do you know? Is it, how do you know what you didn't recapture?
What we missed out on?
Yeah.
Well, we won't know until we get the EAV and the new property estimates. Once we see the new property estimates, we'll be able to calculate how much we missed out on. That's a, I had initial conversations with our, our legal counsel about this, because this is new territory. I know a pair of other districts that I talked to are doing the same thing. And, you know, it's, it's one of these things, again, something new they're putting in place with regards to the tax levy, that none of us have been through the process before, so we're all kind of jumping in the deep end together. But I, I just think it's more, I think it's more fiscally responsible for us to do this. And then once we have those numbers, we'll be able to come back to the board and say, this is what, how it shook out, and this is the next process we need to go through in order to recapture that money. But again, that's, that's only if we go above that 12.5% or 12.5 million dollar new property number.
Because at the end of the day, geographically, we are the district we are in. And apart from this new development that's going up on Tui, there really isn't like a whole chunk of land that isn't being developed. We're not expecting to see new developments up too much.
And that's part of the research, is keeping an eye on what's going on in, within the district boundaries, what's being developed. Now, we don't know who's remodeled their home and maybe, you know, but that's how we try to keep track of it.
Yeah.
When the joke obviously, our new property this year was $13,000. So did someone remodel the kitchen that we, they finally, I mean, that was it. And some district had zero, which I don't see how that's even possible. That three districts, three school districts, 0% of, 0 new property? There has to be something that was added to somewhere. So it just was very odd.
What? What did you say, Eric? What?
13,000?
Ours was $13,000, yeah. A new property, yeah.
That's not a lot.
Doesn't make, it doesn't make a lot of sense.
No, that is a kitchen. It could be the stove. Okay, any other questions? So just as a reminder, this is our tentative levy, so you're going to be bringing this back to us in December, and we will be voting on it then?
Yes, yeah.
Got it.
Any changes that are made in that interim, I'll let you know.
Okay. Well, we're happy if you're happy. Well, I'm happy if you're happy. Thank you very much. Okay, I apologize. We actually did do a motion and second on this, so we actually do need to call a roll on adopting the tentative 2023 tax levy. Thank you.
Sure. Okay, Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Boujde?
Yes.
Mrs. Diakakis?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Okay, adopted. So that's the tentative, and then next month we actually do the vote on the real thing. Okay, so next, can I have a motion and a second to approve the school maintenance grant application?
Second.
Okay, is there any other further comments about this, more explanation of this?
This is a grant application that we apply for annually. It has recently been required that it be approved by the Board of Education prior to submitting. We're targeting, I believe it's $50,000 is the grant. So if we receive it, it would be a $50,000 grant from the state, and we would apply it towards the renovation of our track and field as a part of the overall project.
So this is likely to be a regular thing for us now that we have to approve it each year?
If they continue to offer the funding, we'll continue to apply for it.
Sure, and we'll continue to review it. Okay, so can we, that is money. So can we have a roll call vote, please, for approving the school maintenance grant application?
Mrs. Boujde?
Yes.
Mrs. Diakakis?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes. And the last agenda item that we're.
Final item, we're going to take off the action items. We are not in a position to be offering employment to an ELL teacher, so we have to remove that from the agenda.
Okay. So we're done with our action items. We have items for future consideration. Does everybody have anything to share? Well, I was just going to remind everybody that I will be going to the ISB conference this coming Friday and Saturday. And I'll be, you know, your representative for the committee resolutions voting on Saturday morning. And other than that, I will be attending whatever sessions I can to learn whatever I can, and I will bring you a report next month.
Thank you, Mary.
So. But I highly recommend it, if anybody else can come. It's a bit last minute, but it's definitely worthwhile. So I think that's it. The only other thing I was going to just mention, it's not really an item for future consideration, was that I did go to the North Cook dinner, which was at ETHS a couple of weeks ago. And it was a really good presentation that they did about their equity efforts and successes and so on at ETHS, which obviously has a very high black and Hispanic population. So it was a presentation by Dr. Marcus Campbell, the superintendent and the board president at Savage Williams. It was very good, very enlightening. That's not really future consideration, that's more of a report, but I forgot to mention it earlier. So if there is nothing else to bring to the group, then can I have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting at 7:51?
A motion, a second.
Right.
Okay, could Secretary Proton, please call the roll?
Sure. Mrs. Downing? Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Boujde?
Yes.
Mrs. Diakakis?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you. Thank you very much, everybody.